Good evening. Welcome to the November 14 Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call our meeting to order. First, we will, if you will join us, in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is given by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into our moment of silence, I want to take a minute. Many of you may have already heard the news regarding former Commissioner Fred Castle's passing. Fred was a true public servant in every sense of the word, and especially in his beloved Killable Hills. He was a longtime member of the KDH Fire Auxiliary and the Fire Support Group. And just a few months ago, he was a recipient of the Mayor's Award Achievement for all of his accomplishments and his dedication and service to the town of Killable Hills. Fred has left an indelible mark in our community with his decades of service. His family is going to receive friends and relatives for a viewing on Thursday, November 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Twyford Colony Chaplainmania. And a funeral with Military Honors will be held on Friday, November 16th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Killable Hills Fire Department with Pastor Steve St. Chris officiating. So if, as we move into this moment of silence, if you would keep the Castle family in your thoughts and prayers. With that, we'll enter a moment of silence, please. Before we move into the agenda approval, I have one quick thing, if the board would allow me. I had invited, on behalf of the Board, Commissioner Rue Lattin to join us this evening, and I think she may have another engagement that she needs to get to. But Brandy, if you would join me at the podium for a minute, that would be great. So many of you know that Brandy has recently moved to Carrot Town, and with that movement that she had to step down from her seat as a Commissioner. Brandy was elected in 2011, we actually were elected in that same year, and has served the town of Killable Hills as a Commissioner for the past seven years. When I was thinking earlier about some of the things that I wanted to comment about in addition to just the fact that it's been a pleasure to serve with you over these last seven years, but it struck me at all that we've been able to accomplish together on the Board, from completion of the multi-use path along Bay Drive to the Beach Nursery Project, which was monumental, and then simple things like bringing back Trash Attack and the Ice Cream Social, which are just huge community events, this has happened while Brandy's been on the Board, to other important things like implementing the salary study to ensure that we can create the best environment for our employees, and then, of course, also sidewalks along the bypass, which is a project that we started and continue to fund. So there are many, many more accomplishments that Brandy's had her hands in over the past seven years, and it truly has been an honor and a pleasure serving with you. Thank you for your service. Good for you. So you don't forget Killable Hills, even though you're now on the other side of the bridge. Fortunately, Brandy and I still get to work together through the county, so.
This has been an awesome opportunity. Y'all have a big decision ahead of you, but this is, I can't recommend it any better. So the staff here is tremendous. Debbie, Casey, y'all have all been wonderful. Michael, Mary, everybody is just fantastic. So I can't say that I absolutely know that I'm leaving it in good hands, even though I'll still be working here. So you're not quite done with me. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to agenda approval.
A motion of second, any discussion?
All those in favor, please sit and saying aye. Okay, we'll move on then to, we have two public hearings this evening, and I will turn these over to our town attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Indeed, we have two. And the following rules and procedure are going to apply to these hearings. First off, a public notice of each was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin board in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk shall report all oral comments in concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted and forwarded to the town clerk. Anyone who chooses to speak, we do ask that you please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes if you are an individual. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing prior to the hearing, prior to you speaking to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement can be taped. There will be no debates, and please identify yourself and your address when you come forward. The first public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following proposed financing contract. In accordance with the provisions of NCGS 168-20, a public hearing will be held regarding financing for the final phase of improvements to the Killable Hills Public Works Complex. The recommendation is for acceptance of an offer of a 4.07% fixed interest rate from BBNT for a 15-year life of the law. The following individuals have indicated desire to speak, and again, do we have anybody signed up? Okay. Seeing no one signed up for the first hearing, which again is only on the proposed financing contract, I would ask if anybody in the crowd would like to speak. There we go. More discussion?
The floor is open to the Board for discussion.
I would just like to say that, like I did the first time when we talked about this, what a great job that Sean had done in making this final phase work, because he had to manipulate some things and talk with the contractor. He did a great job. I was really excited about that. Then the only other thing would be that I want to point out that there's a new increase in tax rate, property tax rate in this proposal, so. Other than that, I'm good. I think, okay, y'all did a great job.
One quick question. I saw we only had two bids on it. Do you traditionally only get one or two, or in the past, did more banks normally compete for a business?
It really varies with the economy. BBNT is the current holder of the payment that we're making for the other phases. So this, this really does work out well for the town, staying, being able to stay with the same bank. But we have gotten more in the past, it just varies.
Yeah, we have the two. I just, to piggyback on Jerry's comments, congratulate all the people involved in putting this together throughout the years, and Finance Department too, especially for all the work that they do in negotiating, being able to get us a pretty good rate for today's market on this. I have no problem with it. I defer to Finance.
Okay. Well, it seems like there is consensus for this, so a motion would be in order. It's fine to reference the packet since there's multiple components of permission.
Yes, the A, B, and C, please.
Is there a motion?
So do you want to refer to all of them, or just say yes or no?
As per the.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed financing contract as presented. I also like to add that the Board of Commissioners finds that the requested amendment to Chapter 153, I'm sorry, I need that.
So there's a motion to approve the proposed financing contract as presented in the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please sit and saying aye.
Aye.
You post.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to our second public hearing.
Right. The second public hearing will be called for the purpose of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners to consider Lake Drive Corporation, presented by Joe Lamb. Is Joe Lamb the applicant? Okay. And this is an amendment to Chapter 153, period 082, Section B, subsection 2, subsection G, Exceptions, request to allow seven-foot-high chain link fences on unimproved property in the light industrial one zone. I do not see anybody on the sheet to speak, so I would ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to.
I apologize. I didn't realize that I needed to sign up to speak, but I'm here. My name's Dan Harding, I'm here representing Mr. Lamb.
And, you know, you don't need to sign up. You're more than welcome to step up.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Our request is fairly straightforward. We're asking for a zoning amendment for the L1, Light Industrial One Zone only. This is not a proposal for a townwide change to the fence ordinance, this is specific to the one zoning district, to allow basically a six-foot fence with a three strand of barbed wire on top as not, as a use within the zone or an allowable use within the zone. In looking at the particular zoning district in question, we feel that this type of fence is totally within character of other uses within the zone. There are multiple chain link fences there now. One surrounds the entirety of the fresh pond, and there are five or six other businesses that have the same type of fence. I don't think that, to the casual observer writing down either of those streets there and within the zone, that looking at a fence of this nature or this type would be considered out of character. I'm really going to be brief here. I really don't have much to say, other than, I guess, if you're looking at it from a zoning perspective, what would be the detrimental impact to the zone of allowing this type of fence? I really don't feel that there would be one, so we're asking that the Board consider this amendment request on our behalf. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I open the floor for discussion from the Board.
I do have some questions. My first question would be, Dan, where did you go?
I'm right here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Are you planning to store any equipment or merchandise, or have parking on that parcel?
We're not. The reason the fence was erected was because in the past we had had issues, or Mr. Lamb had had issues with people storing items on the property without permission, just basically being left in kind of a trashy condition. His intent is to keep that property as pristine as possible, at least for the short term, before any sale of the property occurs or any development, perhaps on even where our behalf occurs there. So his desire was simply to keep it clean and neat, and it's, you know, it's now a nice wooded tract of land, and we just had continual problems. And Mr. Lamb did contact the town in the past, we don't, I don't know exactly when, and he asked that something be done about it, and I don't really know where it went from there, and I apologize, I don't have the answer to that.
And, you know, I've known Mr. Lamb for a while, and I've known a lot of his properties that he keeps them up in good repair, and I'm assuming that he would plan to do that with this property as well.
That was his exact intent here, was to keep people from using his property and storing boats or cars or just using it as a dumping ground. He wanted to keep it, you know, neat and clean.
Right. And we do, Meredith, we do have ordinances that if we have, you know, properties that are not kept up, that we can address as far as, you know, making sure that the grass is at a certain heights and stuff like that, where we can make people keep things in line, right?
Not on unimproved property, not for the grass type. We can do it for nuisance, like junk or trash, but not vegetation, no sir.
Gotcha, okay. I did a lot of looking into this, because I couldn't quite get a grasp of why there was a problem with not being able to address some kind of an amendment like this. I gave some pictures to the board members that show, I think there's three pictures of Mr. Lamb's fence, and it didn't really look that intrusive to me. The first one is titled, let's see, you run that?
It's up.
Yes, okay. Might not get this right, but this is the first time I've used this, but this first one is a picture of the fence, and then the second one is a different angle of the same fence. And when you come over on the other street on Lake Drive and look at it, it just doesn't look to be that big of an issue to me. I think that it's something that I would like to see us work with, so that they can keep their property clean and keep people from dumping on it. There are some adjacent neighboring fences and uses in the packet that I took some pictures of. It's not inconsistent with some of the fencing in the area. This area is a highly commercial area. It's probably one of the most commercial areas in town, and it does join a residential zone, but I'll show you some pictures of some of that property where they had joined. This is some fences that are, you know, in the neighborhood, close proximity to it. This is some of the adjacent RL neighborhood zones that back up to this. One house in particular caught my eye, because it has a fence that's probably at least the same length or even taller than what had been put on Mr. Lamb's property. Here's another picture of a residence that has a, at least a seven-foot stockade fence on their property line. You got a 30-foot building behind you. And here's another type of fence that a property owner has. This one doesn't have a fence, but they have a warehouse behind it. And then this is another property that has a stockade fence on their property line. That's the adjacent RL zone, and that's all the pictures that I have, but I just didn't think that it was that much of a problem to try to work with these folks and help them protect their property. That was the key issue that was explained to me, why, you know, they put the fence up. So I support this. I don't see a problem with it. Highly industrial zone, I don't think we need to work with on this. It's my fault.
My question related to the property was indirectly related to the amendments. I can see from the pictures, and I went back there and rode around, and I did see that there are, it's a lot of evidence of people dumping trash or dumping just large items on this lot. The need for the fences, as far as keeping clean and pristine, you know, is apparent, but, you know, construction on the fence is pretty far along. Was a permit petition for this fence initially? Was not? Why did you guys get a permit to build a fence?
Well, I think it, I think it was a miscommunication between the firm we hired to do it, or Mr. Lamb hired to do it. I think one felt the other was getting the permit, and it was an oversight, and it's one we regret for sure.
Okay, that's my first concern. As far as the fence itself, I'm going to borrow a phrase you used earlier, I do feel like it's not out of harmony with, there is just two streets, and it is one of the more overall industrial zones in our town. There's a lot of examples, Commissioner Gray shared, of seven, six and seven-foot chain link fences back there, been there for a really long time. And I do think also that it could, to my knowledge, from what I saw, that's the only undeveloped parcel of property in that whole zone. You're going to keep the last undeveloped piece clean. I think there's some value there. I would like to ask if any of our first responders would want to chime in on any concerns they had. I feel like it's a security area, but I just would like to hear maybe if fire or police departments had any issues with that fence coming up.
Probably fire more with us, if they were trying to get into the property, put out a rush fire, and to us, we can make deals whatever we do, but step barbed wire across the top, our first, if you had to go after somebody, if somebody in there, it's locked.
Well, we are going to put a gate on the, there's a gate on the east end of it. I don't know about, it's not, it's not a yard.
It'll be, I guess, unlocked if you access it. Well, overall, I'm comfortable with the fences, because I do feel like it is in context with other buildings, even buildings and businesses that are already just back there. It's not going to really make a negative impact on anybody. So I'm good with it. My issue is just not asking for a permit, again, is a concern.
I understand.
No further comments?
Yeah, I think in the past, we had, we dealt with some issues where there was some vacant property, where people had been issued with people trespassing and leaving litter and such on the site and back at that time, and I don't recall when it was. Whether I was, I don't remember if I was on a planning board or if I was a Commissioner at the time, but the solution we came up with at that time was to allow property owners to delineate their property with, they had a choice of like two different kinds of fences. One would be like a post with rope, or one would be a split rail, and that would enable them to outline their property lines and put up no trespassing signs or no dumping signs or whatever would be necessary to help protect the property, which would then give them some recourse if something like that happened, so that they could notify the proper authorities here in town, so that it can be investigated and enforced. And if this is not going to be used for storage, which is what we've been told, or any other purpose for the foreseeable future, and I think the seven-foot with barbed wire is kind of overkill for just trying to prevent people from trespassing on the property or perhaps dumping something on the property. And there is a question of access, which we brought up. The access to properties in the previous example that I gave would be relatively simple for our, our staff, whether it be planning or planning enforcement, or whether it be the police department or fire department to access it. Under these conditions, with the seven-foot fence with the barbed wire, that would be problematic for, for our staff to be there in case it was necessary for some reason. You know, I'm not in favor of the seven-foot fence, and this isn't the only place it would be, because of course, anything we do like this is, is not site-specific. It would be, for where that zone exists in town, it would be possible to do the same thing there. So it wouldn't be just limited to this one place. Under those, you know, considering those things, I'm not in favor of it. I think that it can be, in my opinion, that the goal that the owner is trying to accomplish could be done so with a lot less intrusive kind of a fence situation.
When I was on the Board when we actually adopted, it was within the last seven years, we had a request from a property owner to look at, I think, let me step back for a second. The key difference here in some of the pictures we've seen in the property that we're talking on, in this zone that we're talking about, is when you're looking at an unimproved site, which is the case in this situation. And several years ago, we had a request, because prior to that time, you couldn't even put a fence up on unimproved lots. And it was a request that came before the Board, and we evaluated, what are the needs when you're trying to look at an unimproved lot? It's certainly for delineation of knowing what's your property, and also for, in one particular case, this was in between the highways, of stopping the through traffic, whether it's foot traffic or bike traffic through the property. And so when the ordinance was created, and then became part of our land use plan, that was the spirit of it. So I understand the discussion and have read the minutes from the planning board, and I'm sure that's where they were, they denied this on that same premise, of we have an ordinance that's in place to meet the needs for, when you have an unimproved lot, but yet not going excessive on that, that then could create other issues. So I believe that the ordinance we have currently is in line with the land use plan and stand by the planning board with their decision, which was to deny the ordinance amendment. That's my opinion.
I would just like to bring out another point that, and one thing that I was reading through some of the staff comments, and I looked at what the engineer had written, and here's what he wrote. He said, "The need to defend light industrial property against trespassing and dumping seems valid. Chain link fencing, while not the most aesthetically pleasing material, is effective for that purpose, beings that it's transparent." In other words, it lets you see what's in, in the lot. And some of the biggest concerns that I saw, and this is what really swayed me to be in favor of this, was a lot of the comments were assumptions, assuming that there's going to be a parking lot there, or assuming that there's going to be storage there, and they told us that they're not going to do that. Those things would require us to have site plans submitted, and, you know, I think there's remedies in place to affect that should it happen. So, you know, I just, I'm forcing my support for it, I guess, again, and I just wanted to point out the comments from the engineer.
Meredith, in your discussions with the applicant earlier on, were there any other options suggested besides what they're requesting and the other two things that I mentioned, the split rail and the post and rope? Are there other options that you felt could possibly be acceptable to the Board?
Well, the applicant was fairly firm in his request for the seven-foot high with barbed wire. I believe that Karen and I both mentioned that potentially in this zone, a four-foot high chain link fence, which is consistent with a four-foot high split rail and rope and post and rope fence, may be an acceptable alternative, but they were, they were firm in what they wanted to request, so that's their right.
Another question I have is, if there's, in this case, or even in others, I suppose, is there, if there was a complaint brought forth about trespassing or dumping or something on vacant property, whether delineated or not, would that eventually go through you, or would that strictly be through the police department?
Trespassing would strictly be through the police department, not the planning department. If we got a complaint for junk or, not necessarily the dumping, that would probably get to the police department too, but if someone called and said that the lot was a mess and there was tires or equipment or broken down cars and things like that, that would come to the planning department as a nuisance violation.
Did you, to your recollection, did you ever get any information concerning that occurring in this property?
We don't have a file, we don't have a file on this property that we got a complaint in this, but I don't know about the police department. You would need to check with them.
I wouldn't want to put them on the spot if they don't have them. Unless, Dana, unless you would know whether or not you had.
I had my check on it, and we haven't had any complaints to us about it. That was recorded in our department.
Mr. Lamb did indicate that he had called the police department. It could have been as many as two, three, four years ago about this issue, and it just continued. Um. And that is what brought him to this point. I think it's important to note that, again, this request for the fence in this particular district is specific to this district, which is over 90% developed at this time. I can't see where there's going to be any detrimental impact at all when this fence exists throughout the entire zone already. I think to the casual observer riding through there and seeing this fence up, we're not for any kind of thought that it doesn't belong. It's completely consistent with what you see already within the district. It is a, and it is an industrial zone and it is very much different than the remainder of the town. I don't think this fence would be at all appropriate in a residential zone. But in this case, in this particular zone, I, I think it is. And I think the impact of it is going to be negligible. There, there will be no impact at all. But it will maintain this property in a pristine state until such time as it's developed. And it certainly is the best looking tract out there right now. We'd like to keep it that way. I think a four foot fence, anyone can easily toss a bag of trash over it. Not so much so with a six or seven foot fence. So I think there is value in what he's trying to do here. And I appreciate your consideration.
How much trash did they actually haul off of there? Have you had to take the hauls off of?
Those car, right?
Yes, yes, sir, we, we removed two cars off there to wreck the fence on there. There was some trash, there was some old fence that lay on there. We moved a boat, there was a boat on there. There were quite a bit of stuff before we could put, put the fence up that we had.
Thank you for that.
We actually, sea toes, toeing, I actually moved the, the junk vehicle because they were rusted and not moving. Had to drag them up.
It's not as, the intent of the fence is not to make the district look better or worse, rather to make it look better, to keep this land in its pristine condition. And I think a rope fence or a split rail fence would have little protection in that way.
Certainly a four foot chain link fence would, which would be consistent with what we already have adopted. The hard part is that doesn't help them. But that would truly be consistent with the fencing ordinance that we have in place.
Karen, I have a question for you, Meredith. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
To your knowledge, are there any other unimproved properties in light industrial ones? I don't know if there may be.
I, I don't have an answer for that. I would have to do research to.
It looks pretty developed up here. I didn't see anything, but I mean.
I can't answer that question.
I did a quick count of approximately 135 lots in that zone and 14 currently vacant.
Or unimproved.
Unimproved.
Unimproved. So there are.
That's approximate. I'm, I'm not sure. I did it off the tax map, just looking at the properties in there.
And with another solution to this issue is if Mr. Lamb decided to fill a storage building here, a simple shed, but it submitted a site plan and gets approved, where they, they don't allow seven foot, for the pure property, you cannot have.
We wouldn't allow a shed without a primary structure because it's an accessory structure, which is why the fences aren't allowed without a primary structure because it's an accessory.
Primary structure.
Or we have an exception.
Had a warehouse would.
If you had a warehouse, yes, sir, you could have a fence, there's a primary structure.
Is there a minimum size for a warehouse?
We would have to review a site plan and you would have to bring in full stormwater, parking, landscaping.
But under that scenario, the fence would be allowed?
If you had a primary structure, yes, sir.
I was just curious if there's another, around.
Well, I have thought about that as well.
Are you saying that, that the seven foot fence would be allowed if you had a primary structure?
Yes, we, we don't have a height restriction on the height of the fence after a certain height. However, it does have to be engineered, like the one behind the Dare Center and the one behind Lowe's.
The primary structure isn't just based on its size or even usage necessarily. It has to do with the things that you mentioned with parking, drainage and all that other stuff.
It has to be in approved site plan, building permit, with a certificate of occupancy to allow accessory structures and a fence is considered accessory structure. So is a shed, so is a pool, so is a dock.
But my question would be what delineates or differentiates a shed from a warehouse? Would there be a, I mean, is there a minimum square footage required to, for a principal structure?
There's not a minimum square footage requirement, but in order for this planning staff to have.
We'll understand the site plan process.
To see the site plan, I mean, they, she can't just give you a number for square footage.
I think just from a, from a visual standpoint, I, I think a seven foot with barbed wire is a little bit obtrusive. And the purpose that's trying to be obtained here is, I think, could be, could be accomplished by using one of the two examples that I mentioned. And one of the other possibilities that would be the four foot fence. I think that would certainly discourage people and then it would give the property owner recourse if there's any activity going on there that was detrimental to their site.
How high is the, up on the north end of town by Henry's Restaurant, the, there's a pub called Bob Horse and Cogart Track, how high is that fence that goes around that? They've got a fence that goes all the way around that property in each one of them.
I'm not sure of its height.
Okay, I've, I've seen and I, I can't, I couldn't remember how high it was.
The one behind Lowe's is 20 feet.
Yeah, it seemed, it seemed to be like it's maybe like four foot or five foot.
I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not confident in that.
But I mean, that's, that's just right out on the fly path.
The, the, the chain link fence that goes around the, the play park at Aviation Park is a four foot high chain link fence. If that gives you an example.
That might be a little higher.
If that gives you an example of what a four foot high chain link fence looks like, we have it around our play area for containment, safety.
I, you know, I, I don't have anything else to add. I'm, I still support it. I think we need work to, to help them out and I support it. So I don't have anything else to add.
No, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then we request a motion.
I would move that we approve the request amendment to chapter 153, Lake Rock Corporation, 153.082, B2G, exceptions, request to allow seven foot chain link fence on unimproved property in the light industrial one zone.
Here's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Others in favor, please sign a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
This is the first thing that hits us when we have a two-two. We don't have a full board. So the motion doesn't carry. Let me ask from legal perspective, I mean, sorry. Can the applicant return at any point when there's a five member board?
There, there's a time period on it because the motion now dies as it sits on the floor. So, and Meredith, fill me, help me with the code provision on the time limit on bringing the same application back.
365 days from the action of the board.
Okay, so I feel like we were going to fall into that scenario here to where if this comes back.
It might be two years, just one second.
And there's no exception when you don't have a five member board, there's no exception.
And Debbie and I were discussing that as well prior to this meeting because we knew we were coming in with, with our board members, with a full board members all here.
With not a motion to table until a full board is seated and then bring it backed up with that and all of, that, that would automatically bring it back, wouldn't it?
It did, okay. Meredith, for clarity, it is two years, two years from today.
However, if the applicant were to come with a different amendment and repay a application fee that is not identical to this amendment, that provision does not apply. So if they were to modify their request or to make some other provision, but a seven foot high chain link fence in the light industrial ones, it cannot be resubmitted for changes.
Okay, then my question would be back to you, counsel. Can I make a motion to table it until such a time that the board is fully constituted and then bring this issue back up?
You can, however, there, there are limitations or better said, there, there's obligations placed on the board. It can only be tabled for X amount of time, Meredith, I'm forgetting the code. I think it's 60 days if I'm not mistaken. It can only be tabled for X time until it has to come back before the board. So then there, and the question is, will we have a five member? I would assume so before any time period expired. So perhaps that doesn't apply, but there are some issues that we need to get clarity from in the code. So far as what obligations would be placed on you guys in the event it was tabled?
So even though we already did all this, then.
It, it, there could be.
I knew there's something.
It'd have to be, it'd have to be a different motion, right?
So.
As long as we don't leave the meeting before we have another motion. So we're still active, right?
I have a question for Meredith when she's done.
Meredith, if you can't readily find it, I'm not concerned that the obligations in my mind would really affect the scenario of your life. I think there would be a full board before any.
I think you could craft a motion in such a way that you did a tableing motion until there was a fully constituted board in compliance with the time constraints.
Exactly.
For expiration.
Or subject to the time.
Correct.
That's right.
So I think, I think you could craft a motion in such a way to do that.
Okay, which would be the.
Right.
That's right, the table scenario, yes.
Table it as, as in the memo where it says, table the amendment for further consideration. And then you add what you were just saying about as in within the time constraints required.
I can't quickly find those.
No problem.
I don't think we have to have it, I think we can work around that with, yeah.
Just kind of curious, Meredith, you said it could come back at some other time. As long as it's not the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Does that mean it could, it sounds silly, but could it be something as simple as a six foot, 10 inch fence? Or does it have to be substantially different?
It says there has to be a, a change to the. I keep closing it, I don't know why I keep closing it.
But, but I think, I think what Commissioner Gray is, is saying.
It would come back predicated on a motion that I would make, which would forego this. I mean, that would.
Right, because they're putting the applicant through going back through resubmission, back to the planning board and then back, back to the board.
No, you don't need to.
This is just giving it an opportunity to have a decision when we have a five member board. So you're not looking at the.
That's the sole purpose of what we're.
Right, right. Which I think in fairness to the applicant is a good route to go.
And I'd be willing to make that motion to table this. I, for, for the consideration when we have a fully constituted board, as long as it doesn't conflict with the time constraints that may be placed on it. And, and that essentially we schedule this for our next meeting after we have a fully sitting board. So, so that's a.
Make your motion, okay. We will accept that as a motion. We know what you're saying.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It'd have to be date and time specific.
No. All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we will move on then to the first time set aside this evening for public comment. We did have a signup sheet, we'll call from the signup sheet first and then we'll call from the floor. I would like to welcome Chairman of the Dare County Commissioners, Bob Woodard, to speak. He is here though as a citizen of Kill Devil Hills, but certainly welcome Chairman Woodard. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor Proctor, I should say, Commissioners and Town Manager. I've got multiple meetings again this evening too, and I apologize, I got to leave right after this, but I'd be remiss if I didn't come before you this evening to, to just thank this board. And I don't see Steve in the room tonight, but certainly Public Services was incredible after the Michael storm. As most of you are aware, Bob Woodard, I live on Bay Drive. We had about eight hours of pretty heavy winds and a surge that we certainly didn't expect. It was about a 6.3 inch surge. I had about a foot, a, a foot of waves banging against my garage door for eight solid hours. So as well as most of the other residents on Bay Drive. It's kind of a repeat of seven years ago with Izzy, but with a seven foot surge. And, and I'm sure most of y'all have seen the devastation that took place on Bay Drive. That ended at about three o'clock in the morning. And eight o'clock that morning, Public Services was out there sweeping the street, cleaning up. The police, fire, everybody was out there trying to keep people off the street from a lot of people coming by because homeowners were trying to clean up their properties. And I just can't, and, and Public Services and the police department stayed out there all day that day and the next day. And, and they continued to sweep and while residents continued to pile up their trash and, and on top of that, y'all were expedient and picking it all up and, and coming back, even second, second rounds. So I just can't thank you enough for what, what Public Services did. And it speaks volumes as to how committed this board is and Public Services in making sure that their residents are taken care of. And I, I really appreciate that and I just wanted to make my, my presence known. Thank you all and thank you for that. And the second thing I'd like to say tonight is, Brandy, congratulations on seven years. I know you've worked really, really hard for Kill Devil Hills and you've represented the citizens extremely well. I, I will tease you a little bit about the beach nourishment piece. And we go way back on that. You had your angst about it, but you came around and I commend this board for stepping up to the plate along with Kitty Hawk and, and Duck. As you can see, we've, we've done, in Dare County alone, just the projects that we've had, over a hundred million dollars in Dare County is committed to, to maintain those along with the towns. And, and I'm, I'm proud of the fact that you, you came around on that. It was a difficult, it's a difficult decision, it really was. And I commend you for doing that. And I, I couldn't help but tease you a little bit about that tonight. But thank you for what you've done for Kill Devil Hills citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob.
So much, Bob.
Thank you.
See you.
Have a good evening. Is there anyone else that I'd like to speak at this public comment time? Jack, welcome, good to see you.
Bob, don't leave. Because I want to talk about the same thing. But I was taught as a young man, never follow a superstar because you're going to be far outshone. But anyway, I wanted to talk and congratulate you folks, the elected officials and all the staff in Kill Devil Hills about how rapidly you responded to that storm. As most of you know, I've lived at 917 Senior Drive for 20 years. But in the 21st year, I now live on Bay Drive with my new wife here, who's a smart lady that moved from unincorporated part of the county to Kill Devil Hills, Martin Point. And that told me right away, that's a smart girl, I need Meredith. I do have some questions about, about that storm and your reactions to it and how well you did that. How well did the new drainage system work on Bay Drive? There was a lot of work and it took a long time. And I was just out of curiosity, has Public Works done any work to measure how effective it was? The second question is, I'm assuming that Public Works has investigated their drainage system to see if there's any clogs because there was a mountain of vegetation debris that came up across all our properties, particularly the southern part of Bay Drive. And I was concerned that perhaps it had clogged up some of the drainage systems. And I think that's a, a real concern and I would assume that Public Works has already looked at that. And further, this was an unbudgeted activity. So you probably went into, you had to go into the reserve fund. So how do you replenish the reserve fund and how quickly can it be done? Because for sure, we all know something like this is going to happen again. We just don't know the timing of it, but working with Murphy's Law, it probably will happen sometime. And we just don't know the timing of it, but working with Murphy's Law, it probably will happen sometime soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Sue, welcome.
Good evening. Uh, Sue Kelly, Sea Village Lane, speaking on behalf of the Community Apairance Commission. The Community Apairance Commission had our last meeting last Thursday. And, um, I'll just mention that we did take up the question of drainage. We had quite a discussion about some of the issues related to drainage, both the outflow from, um, the water that's collected and just in general on the streets, which of course is, is the NCDOT's problem. But we do have some issues about making sure that that drainage works all the time. Um, I think you all know that we have two projects as the Community Apairance Commission. One is this effort to eliminate some of the cigarette butts that get tossed all over the place. And, um, it's going very well. Commissioner Winley and I participated in the Sunday, uh, October 28th, um, Halloween parade and activity around Frog Pond and Aviation Park. Um, I think it's really cool that it's come to KDH. It seemed very successful. I, I hope Commissioner Winley would agree with me that we were very well received, talked to a lot of people, and gave out our little butt containers. So it's going very well, and we will continue to cover all of these. It really is kinda funny, the butt part of it. I mean, it's part of the fun of it, um, that KDH is kicking butt. Um, I'm glad that we have gone with that. I didn't really know whether the town would really wanna go with that, um, as terminology, but I think it's really cool. But anyway, we're gonna continue to be wherever we can, um, doing these kinds of things. And the other project, of course, um, is, um, the project that we're, um, God, it's totally left my mind. That's what you get from being old. It's the bags.
It's smart.
It's our, it's our bag smart campaign to get more people. Thank you all. Uh, thank you, John, for, uh, to get more people to use recyclable bags. So, um, that's something that we're gonna be making a final decision about what we wanna buy, what we want it to look like, and how we will distribute those. We'll probably have to sell them because they're not, um, inexpensive, that's for sure. Most important thing probably is that our next Community Apairance Commission meeting next month is the 13th, December 13th. That's, that's a Thursday. We meet in this room at 8:30 in the morning. And, um, our meeting for the Butt Committee. Now, the Community Apairance Commission is an open meeting. Anybody who wants to can come, and we are interested in people's views and ideas. So we invite people. It's a public meeting under the law as well. Um, the, the other committee that's meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, which is the Butt Committee, um, is open to participation. Uh, people can come. It's a public meeting as well. It's publicized in the paper, and people can come, and these folks are not appointed, so you can participate in a different way. You can, you can vote on things, for example. So we welcome people to come to that meeting, and we should have a lot of really good conversation, uh, tomorrow. Let me say also that, uh, we welcomed a new member to the CAC. And that's just a reflection of how, um, the group handles these transitions, bringing in new people. It's working very well for us, and we got a new good person, um, to come in for someone who chose not to be reappointed. And I think if my mind has let me do it, that's all I wanted to say, except for one more thing, and that's to thank Brandy for everything, always. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time?
I don't, Mayor, if I, if I can only say one word, one thing.
Absolutely.
Because it fits right in with Sue and, and her committee and the great work they're doing. We have another committee as well, and, uh, it's headed up by Colleen Almond. It's a neighborhood watch program, and she's done fantastic as far as getting people to participate in that. And we're, we're moving right along, so we'll, we'll talk later about that, uh, with a, a meeting coming up and so forth.
Great. Thank you. And under a response to public comment, um, specifically since Jack had a couple of questions, we are, well, you had questions about the drainage effectiveness and, um, clogs. Do we have any issues? And I see Derek's here. I'm not sure if Derek's comfortable responding to that. If not, we can follow up later to, with our response.
Give some response.
Okay. So Derek Gales with our Public Works Department. And goodness, I met him on the road the day after the storm, what, probably?
At 6:45 in the morning?
About 6:45 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, he was out there working hard, so...
He had three, he had three main questions, uh, uh, wrote down. Um, he asked if there's any kind of analysis on how well the storm drainage did. There's not any, I would say, engineering data that was performed, but when we went out to the site at, at first light, there was no water standing in the normal spots it used to between Indian and Third Street. I mean, it, it was wet from all the vegetated debris, but all the ponding that you would normally see that sometimes lasted for weeks after multiple rains, that was gone. And really didn't see any standing water throughout the project area. West Durham Street too was, that's usually pretty wet, and that was drink, um, first thing in the morning. You asked about clogs. We had a benefit, well, one of the benefits of our pedestrian grates showed itself during the storm. They had very tight spacing on the great, grates. So those large piles that may have been piled up on top, on top of some of our storm drains, that, that's great to not let the material fall into it. So we really haven't found much in the way of blockages. The only places that really, the debris could really get into it that could block the storm drains would be some of the, uh, side streets where they have open pipes that tie into them. And we have inspected all those for blockages and haven't found them. We've found some, we've picked up piles and stuff in front of some of the, some of the pipes, but we removed all of that debris from the area and hadn't found any of them. We've done some inspections at the key grates too, to see if there's any sediment buildup from dirt and stuff been pushed in. But for the most part, it's, everything's in pretty good shape at the end of the day. And, uh, I don't have a lot of comments on funding. We did an in-house estimate of what the work was going to cost, and we thought it was gonna be a very large number. Well, they'll say that Dare County did us a really good service and waived the tipping fees for the storm debris. So, we, that was really, that probably cut, uh, our costs by two-thirds. Our costs, our expected costs, it was only a third of what we thought it was gonna be.
I hope you might get to add, yeah, to the budget. Thank you very much, Derek.
Thanks, Derek. And we are continuing to pursue reimbursements from the state. Federal reimbursements for some of, um, our damage from Hurricane Florence, and some state reimbursements for a tropical storm, Michael. But as far as the fund balance, that's one of the reasons that it's so important to have a healthy fund balance. And our board's just done an excellent job with that in the past, to where when we're in situations like this, we don't have to wait to make sure we're gonna be reimbursed before we start the work. And the company that, um, we had piggybacked the contract with Dare County did an excellent job. They got here quickly. They brought the right equipment. And they got, they got the debris cleaned up before it became a health issue. And that was, that was our main concern.
Okay, um, any other comments from the board? Okay, we will move on then to the next item on the agenda. Under Old Business is the Draft Water Shortage Response Plan. Debbie?
Yeah, this, this, well, and I'll, I'll talk when he gets up here. He's gonna be your technical question. Um, you saw this last month. It's been out on, um, display and out for review for that 30-day public comment period, which we, um, did not receive any comments, uh, written comments. And we would recommend, um, adoption of the resolution to adopt the Water Shortage Response Plan as presented. And if, like I said, Derek can answer any technical questions she may have had since the other meetings, the last meeting.
Do we have any questions from the last meeting? Same, same information. We just had to put it out for the public comment time.
Give me a 30-day period.
Okay, um, questions and a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Draft Water Storage Response Plan as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this.
Looks like you got a lot more work, Mayor, than you would have.
Of course. That's all good. Great team of staff. That's straight. Okay, we'll move on to New Business. Item number one, the consideration of applications for a possible appointment to the vacancy on the Board of Commissioners. So many of you, like, kinda followed the history here, and of course, we already spoke about, um, Brandy's relocation to Currituck and creating the empty seat. So back in August, we agreed as a board on the process, um, and, and put out applications or put out the announcement of applications for the vacant seat. And I think, certainly I can speak to my surprise, very pleasant surprise, and the other commissioners can, can speak in a moment, was the amount of interest from really qualified people. We originally had 10 applications, too, were withdrawn, so there's eight applicants that wish to be considered for this. And with the exception of, of one, I know all of these individuals personally, and, um, just really can't speak highly enough of my appreciation to you for, um, putting yourself out there, completing the application, showing your interest in serving the town. Um, I wish it was a bigger board, and we could appoint more than one person after looking at these applications, 'cause I think we have multiple, um, well-qualified people. I also would like to say, for those of you who, since we only have one seat, are not appointed, I, I can't encourage you enough to put in an application to serve. You've heard about the great committee work that happens. Some of them, we've talked about the committees here. Um, we also have other boards, whether it's the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And when there's vacancies, it's really nice to draw upon applications that are existing. So, um, if you don't have an application to serve one of those, it's a great way too to get your foot in the door, so to speak, of, um, really understanding the different processes that happen. Because all of those boards filter information up to this board to ultimately make decisions and guide policy and, and budget. And most all of those have an influence there. So, um, I just, before we get started with kind of the voting process, just wanted to make that announcement and thank everyone for their interest in Kill Devil Hills. We'll be in good hands. Anyone else have anything they want to add?
I'd like to thank all the people who applied. What a wealth of talent, you know, how lucky we are to town to have so many great people who want to serve. Guys are so good, kind of, this is a big, it's a tough decision to make. Uh, but I just wanna express gratitude. I know, I spoke with everybody, met most of us face to face, and I really enjoy getting to know everybody better through this process. It's been, uh, been a real pleasure for me. And thank you all again for being willing to serve.
And to echo that, I, uh, I met with, with everybody and, uh, had, uh, some questions I had developed and, and, uh, talked with them at great length. I was just blown away by the amount of talent, uh, in the folks that applied. And, I mean, there, there were some top-notch people there that, uh, uh, you know, could benefit the town tremendously in any, uh, board atmosphere that they get involved with. And thank y'all very much for coming up and, and stepping up to the plate because, uh, I was impressed. Good people there.
And I agree with both of you, and, um, but with all of us board members that have looked at these, and it's not actually, I mean, there's really some good people there. And, um, if we could vote on how many members to have, we'd make several choices. Unfortunately, we, we, we can only make it one, but I, I, I wanna make, uh, sincere gratitude to everybody that applied. It's, it's not an easy decision to make, um, for some people. It wasn't easy for me at the beginning when I decided to see about being on the board. And I'm certainly glad I did, and I'm really glad you folks were. Took the time and effort and the incentive to apply. And, um, please, the ones that are, are not maybe chosen tonight, I, again, encourage you to, uh, keep your foot in the door and be involved and see how things progress in the future, but we'd love to have you in, uh, any capacity.
Okay, so as far as a process for this evening, um, staff have prepared paper ballots. They're not at your seats, are they? So they're... Oh, everybody already has them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, um, it's a paper ballot with everybody's name on it for consideration. So the process would be, board members would complete a ballot and pass them to me, and I will announce the outcome of the vote. From there, so they'll take them. We got already ready.
It's easier than Florida.
I will only be looking at four ballots. Okay, um, so the four ballots that were turned in, I have two votes for Skip Jones and two votes for Colleen Almond. Mayor Proton Hogan, and myself for Colleen, and, um, Commissioner, um, Gray and Winley for Skip. So, um, you have extra ballots at your seat. We can vote again. Procedurally, see if there's any difference in vote, any change in vote. There is no change in vote with that. So we find ourselves again at a, uh, split decision. Comments, thoughts, input, discussion?
We need to just remember that.
It really, I mean, it's tough, 'cause there's such great evidence.
Not just the two finalists, but the whole, the whole group is great. And it is a challenging decision to make. Any of these outcomes would have been great for our town and our board, so...
I know you're looking to speak for guidance, as the mayor. And really, where we find ourselves is how you're, we're not, it, it's two-two. You're not in a decision to make an appointment. I mean, that's Captain Obvious here. So our options are, um, we really don't have a lot of options other than you can table to the next meeting and see if anyone changes their vote to, so you don't have this two versus two. That's really your, your option. There has, I, there's another option. Years ago, a, a previous board did, you kinda joked a minute ago, flip the coin. I'm not a big advocate of coin flipping.
Not a fanny or something?
But that is an option. That's how they solved it before in the past. Well, I was just, if I'm discussing options, that is an option. But, yeah, I mean, until there's a true majority vote for one individual or another, the seat stays vacant. And so the board at any point can say, let's try voting again.
I'm not a fan of the coin toss, but we need to, we need to have a constituted board. It is not the desired faction. We can get this business done tonight. I mean, I'm, it's not what I want to see happen. I don't, I'm a fan. But I would like for us to be able to move forward as a full board. So I'm a, if that's what it takes, then I'm another considerate option. And how do you guys feel? I mean, I know it's not optional, it's not...
It's preferred, but I...
Preferred, but it, it gets it.
I wouldn't wanna go there personally.
Yeah, that's the same.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
I mean, do you think more time meeting with the two individual candidates between now and the next meeting and try to see if anyone's, would have a change in their vote?
You can certainly schedule another vote for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's, I see.
You can do that. I don't know what, you know, what people would think, you know, to change their mind or not. You can speculate on that.
He's one of these candidates that needs to break down. I, even though we have a tie, you know, whoever gets the seat is going to be a good commissioner. So I feel good knowing that whoever this works, looks out, you know, we're going to get a good, good result. He can table for them to vote or.
I would be inclined to vote, willing to change, I mean, we could vote again, but if no one's thinking they're going to change their vote tonight, then I would be inclined to suggest use the next couple of weeks before we meet again. Maybe an opportunity to sit down if a board member chooses to reach out to. There is consensus that it's between Colleen Almany and Skip Jones. So I think the board could say it's going to be between the two of them. And if board members want to reach out to either of both of them between now and the next meeting to see if there's any change with that again and then. That's just an alternative.
Is it acceptable for the board, the sitting board here to state why they feel like they're, whatever the person is, is their choice? I mean, and state reasons for that or just leave it at just vote?
Sure, I mean, that's, that's fine. I tend to think that there's also consensus that either member would be either, there's plenty of names that would be great. Servants to the town. And I think in this case, both would be as well. So I would think that the issue is if someone wants to change their vote one way or the other. But that's fine, if someone wants to, the four's open.
You know, I'll be quite honest with you, the, all of the applicants, like everybody has said, all of the applicants were good. And any of them would do a great job. Between these two applicants, I think they're neck and neck. And, you know, I think, I just, I think there's a certain reason, some of the interview questions, stuff like that. Some of the services and people that form their own opinions based on the different criteria. But I think they're pretty close, you know.
They have incredible track histories of service to the town, active and active service.
So, I mean, that's, you know, that's some of the things that made my mind up, you know, in talking with them and evaluating. But I think you can either, you can table it for the next meeting and do another vote, or you can do it now. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't see much change, at least from my perspective. I think that's, you know.
Well, I think I'm inclined to say, bring it to the next meeting. And then I think also, even though I'm truly not a fan of a coin toss, I do think between now and the next meeting, not only have an opportunity, I guess, for further questions, but perhaps to come to a grip with what if we still find ourselves at two-two, three weeks from now? What action would we want to take, if any? But we see through earlier activity at the board tonight, what happens when you only have four members on the board. A year is a long time for that.
Basically, probably, let's you think about what would be the best way to move forward if we do that again.
Well, and I'm just one vote of the four, so I will take any input if anyone else has any thoughts or suggestions, so.
Like a race or something?
That are valid and make good sense, certainly bring them forward or.
The marathon, that would have to be short.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this will be on our next gen, I'm seeing consensus there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay.
And again, thank you everybody that applied. Put us in the South Side, it's our choice.
Okay, next, we will move on to new business, item number two. Our zoning administrators can provide an overview of the event application process. And actually, Meredith's going to do that. This is at our request, since this came up as a discussion item at the last meeting. Wanting to kind of look at what our current application process and the zoning ordinances are around this. And so Meredith, thank you and the staff for putting this together.
And I will apologize for not being Donna Elliott. She does process almost all of our special event applications. She's had a death in her family and was unable to be here tonight, so I am standing in her place. I hope I'll be able to live up to her knowledge of this specific topic. To start with, I'll give you the definition so that everybody understands what two types of events that we have been talking about. Charitable special events are defined as an indoor or outdoor event, fair, carnival, festival, musical concert, sporting competition or contest, conducted, organized and coordinated or otherwise held by an organization on public or private land, which 100% of the profits realized by the performaty after expenses shall be donated to the organizations that's recognized as a tax-exempt nonprofit under the provisions of the United States Internal Revenue Code. Charitable events are allowed within the town year-round. Charitable events with for-profit vendors are allowed within the town September 30th through May 1st. Shoulder season and off-season charitable events can have vendors that are for-profit. Summertime charitable events have to be 100% charitable without for-profit vendors. Charitable events are also allowed on the beach. There are a few more regulations that they must follow for events on the beach. Some of those that they cannot block beach access, as no more than 300 linear feet of dry sand can be used for the event and no vendors at any time can be used or rentals and no live music on the beach. Non-charitable special events are defined as events operated solely for the purpose of providing a venue for itinerant vendors to sell or offer for sale articles of merchandise, food or beverage. Non-charitable special events are only allowed in our government and institutional zones, under public ownership and meekens field. This portion of the ordinance was developed by staff by the request of Dare County for the 2003 Centennial Flight. They had vendors that were coming in that wanted to set up in rec park and also at the schools. And it was 100% for-profit, there was no charitable event involved. It was for the centennial and that's how the non-charitable special events was added to the ordinance in 2002. Basic regulations for charitable events. Many requirements for charitable events, regardless of when and where they are, are basically the same, including hours of operation and duration, trash disposal, written permission from the property owners to have the event on the site, permits required for tents at no cost, the permit is for the tent is not a no-cost permit, and signage requirements. Charitable events held May 30th through, I mean, September 30th through May 1st have a few more requirements such as the number of events per year, they are limited to four per year for, and these are the charitable events that have for-profit vendors, okay? The number of for-profit vendors allowed per event is 20. Vendors must require a business license if they do not already have one with the town. And still 100% of the profits realized by the performaty after expenses must go to a tax-exempt nonprofit organization. This does not include profits from the vendors, the vendors are for-profit, just the entire event itself still has to be for a charitable cause. The application, we have a two-page application, it was included in your packet, I'll just put it up here for a few minutes and then I'll go through what the application process is. We have crowd control procedures, traffic and parking control, impacts of the performance or event on the parking areas, streets, highways, and effects of the performance on the fire prevention, provisions of emergency metal service, services, excuse me, say that fast twice, and first aid, provisions for collecting disposing of solid waste, provisions for taking the property back to the pre-event status, the square footage and type of signage and any tents that they may need. So the application, ooh. There we go. The application review process. The first thing that staff does is make sure the application is complete. They review, make sure the event and location meet our ordinance, that it is a nonprofit organization. They review the parking requirements, if the event is going to impede on required parking spaces, if they need extra parking and do they have permission to use other parking areas. Location and size of the proposed sign, permission from the property owner if needed. Sometimes the property owner's the one having the event, so they obviously don't need permission from themselves. Health department approval as needed, that would be for any type of food service or any type of sanitary things that they may need on-site. A sketch and layout of the event, a written description of the event and sometimes a copy of the flyer with details gives us most of that information and the informational intents as needed. That was two different slides, sorry, I did not hit it twice. Once we have, once we have the application, the application goes into the review process. It's distributed to department heads for their comments. Each department focuses on a different aspect of the event. For instance, the police department reviews for safety, noise and off-street parking issues, data, if I skip something, let me know. Public services reviews for trash disposal and right-of-way access issues. Fire reviews any tents and proposed ingress and egress for the event for emergency personnel. The staff comments are consolidated and addressed the applicant and are addressed by the applicant as necessary. Once all the comments have been addressed, an approval letter will be sent to the applicant, which includes any conditions, suggestions from other departments. For larger events or complicated planning events, multiple location type events, staff may meet with the applicant to discuss the events, logistics and the logistics to work out any issues that need to be addressed to gain a better understanding of the event. For example, every year, staff, including the police department, public services and planning department, meet with Outer Banks Sporting Event before the marathon. And there's many other events where we have meetings with, before the event. Some things we discuss are crowd control, traffic, race routes, security, safety precautions. Many of the events that are held every year with very little change, such as the parades, fun runs, art rages, festival of trees. The smaller events typically do not require meetings. There have been very few events in the town that have been applied for and denied. Usually staff can work with the applicant, make the event fit into the ordinance so their event can move forward. Over the years, the town has hosted a variety of special events, some loved, some not so loved, including best body on the beach contest at Avalon Pier, the skimboard contest, surf contest, art rages, festival of trees, roller derby events and many, many more. One of the biggest issues that we encounter during the review process is parking for the event. In section 153076A of the town code, the parking ordinance states, quote, "Required off-street parking spaces are permanent areas and shall not be used for any other ground purposes." This regulation means that if the parking spaces are required for the business by ordinance, they can only be used for that purpose. However, staff has used this interpretation that if the business is not open, the parking is not required. Therefore, the outdoor parking area can be used for the purposes of the special event. If a special event is held within a business inside the doors, then the parking is deemed adequate as prescribed by the ordinance for the business. No access is needed for additional areas or use for persons. So in, in, in looking at all of the special events and going through this ordinance with a fine tooth comb preparing this presentation, staff's come up with a few recommendations. This ordinance has been through many revisions over the years with the purpose of protecting local businesses while allowing fun, short-term events around town. Over the years, the number of events has also increased dramatically, as well as the diversity and size of the events themselves. Because of this, staff would recommend developing a new section of the town code to address special events independently. This would move the charitable, non-charitable special regulations out of one, after, out of chapter 111, peddlers and itinerant vendors to a new code section. The peddlers and itinerant vendors would remain. This would streamline our regulations, make them easier to understand, categorize them in a more efficient manner. Staff would recommend that once a section has been developed and organized, staff can bring the draft back to the board for any changes to the regulations that the board deems necessary. I'll be happy to answer any questions and I would appreciate any board direction on that.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
Comments, discussion?
I think, I think she, I think she's got something with that proposal. I, I, I think that, I think that's what needs to be done because I think things have changed over the years and I think it needs a fresh look at it. And I think that if she can, and planning staff can develop that in a more precise and clear way where we can have events. Because, you know, just to forego some faults that I have here later, that I was going to bring up under Commissioner's agenda, but Mary and I have been looking at something that Mayor Pro Tim Hogan worked on a while back and that was the park atmosphere around Rock Run in this area. And kind of, Mary and I have talked about trying to get things moving forward to have more of like what we saw at Halloween, festive events and stuff like that, that could even spill over into some of our business areas. That, you know, that's something that could be addressed in that type of proposal where, you know, if we're going to have an event like that, we're going to have people walking and all through the town complex and going to these businesses. There may be people that want to put, you know, vendor tents up and stuff like that. So that's something that could be looked at. I think you've got a great concept here, a good idea. I'd love to see what you develop for that.
I will tell you, this was a collaborative effort between Mary and I, our long conversation earlier this week. So I'm not going to stand here and take all the credit for it. Mary and I have been talking about this a lot since the board asked for this presentation. And that seems to be, when I first started with the town, the special events ordinance was created so people could sell Christmas trees after Thanksgiving to Christmas. That was the extent of our special events. Obviously, you look around now, we have a tremendous amount of events, a tremendous, a tremendous amount of nonprofit organizations that have events and it's probably time to give it its own credit and take it out of the peddler and itinerant vendor ordinance.
I think so. I think we're kind of getting lost in the, in the, in the dust here. It took me about 15 minutes or maybe, maybe 20 max for Mary to talk with me about some of the ideas she had that I got really, matter of fact, she made a file for me and I got looking at some of the history and some of the events that, you know, people had talked about. And it got really to be something that was very exciting, something that would be vibrant for our town. I'd love to see what you come up with.
Anything specific when, as far as direction or guidance or things that you want them to consider? For example, we talked about some topics at the last meeting. Meredith mentioned, as we look at special events, parking is always the biggest challenge. I know there was discussion, I believe, at the last meeting about trading some parking requirements and whatnot. So I mean, is that something you do want them to look at and how far that can be stretched, if it can be stretched? Or what's the pros and cons of stretching? I mean, certainly some of them we know immediately from a public safety concern, but.
I think probably if Meredith and you and staff develop something as far as the ordinance, I think that some of those other questions may or may not pop up as far as parking that are specific to location. And if there appears to be a need to address the parking issue. The one thing that stuck out in my mind was the banking industry. Not a lot of people go to banks anymore and we require a lot of parking for banks, most people do it online. So that, that was the thing that stuck out in my mind, do we need to readdress our parking ordinance? Maybe we don't, but I think that this.
That might not be a part of special events.
Whether we need to do that.
That may become with our update to our zoning ordinance, which we do have planned in, in the next year, so.
So I, I, I think it'll develop by itself is what I'm saying. I think that it'll surface. I'm, so I'm really excited about this. I think you did it on the ad.
Meredith, what's the realistic timeline for you guys to be? Meredith, what's the realistic timeline for you guys to, to be working on something? I mean, that.
I would like to ask till after the first of the year if that's possible.
Okay, that's why I asked, I figure this isn't a turnaround in 30-day kind of thing, so.
No, and we'll need to reorganize how it's set up now and we'll also have to get the Peddler and Attendant Vendor Ordinance in order because some things do, will be repetitive in the two ordinances and, and that may take us some time to kind of whittle through and, and get right so that we can bring it to you in a comprehensive manner and you can look at both of them and, and address any concerns or anything that you would like to change before we adopt it.
I think that's fair and I think, how about, Debbie can certainly just email and update us because we only have one meeting, I believe, scheduled in January. Is that correct?
Yeah, we actually have not scheduled.
Oh, that's right.
We'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay, so we can, historically, I think we only have one in, in January. Is that right?
Probably get a request, a budget.
One of those would be a budget workshop?
Shop this year.
We're heading to a two-year budget?
Yeah. The first year of two years.
Okay, so we don't need a date specific, but sometime after the new year?
Yes, ma'am.
For this time.
Mary, ask a one more question. I know we've talked a little bit about food truck vendors and I don't know, would that, that target be totally separate from this?
Completely, completely separate.
Yeah. Thank you.
She made that crystal clear.
Urgent.
Very, very, very different. Now, food trucks that may be at a special event and they could be the for-profit vendor is a different conversation, but food trucks in general being allowed in town is a totally different handle.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Good job.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Moving on.
That's right.
We'll move on into item number three under old business and this is the inspection and maintenance program for pervious pavement. If you recall, this is something that our board requested staff to look at creating a plan. This was after we were, had this topic presented to us and we know that the pervious pavement requires maintenance, but when, through our discussion, we realized the town does not have any way of kind of evaluating or inspecting or ensuring the maintenance of that, so hence we requested staff to come up with something. Staff did come up with a draft that they took to the planning board in August and what was presented to the planning board then was tabled with recommendations to change the provisions that were presented to make it less restrictive. Our revised second amendment was taken to the planning board on October 2nd. However, the amendment failed by a vote of two to three. The discussion at that time included concerns that the language was now not restrictive enough, so it went from making it less restrictive to not restrictive enough. The process is too complicated and the, and some comments for the process is unnecessary. So this is now before us to provide some guidance on this item. So the planning board was not able to come to any agreement on a recommendation, so it's now before us and Meredith.
You can answer questions if you need.
Okay, she's available for questions if you have any, so. We'll open this for discussion for the board.
I attended, I believe all of the planning board meetings that this topic was discussed and it was, it was, the ball's batted around quite a bit. It was a real challenge, kind of, like consensus on, especially the different views about not being restrictive enough, too complicated or even unnecessary. My, my feeling kind of was, making it user-friendly for the people who take advantage of this is possible. I, I think putting a plan together where the owner has to assume the cost of having this inspector kind of be awfully tough, it would be almost a dis, maybe discourage people from maybe using this product because it has some environmental benefits. My feeling coming out of those meetings and today is maybe making this, of the three categories, not restrictive enough, too complicated or unnecessary, I feel like we should kind of go to, put a policy together or some guidance together where it's maybe complaint-driven, if people find issues, we can respond to, but no real inspection system may be unnecessary at all. I don't know, does the town have any inspection system in place for any of the pervious concrete and commercial zone or yes?
So our current ordinance in all zones that perviable pavement has been approved says all perviable pavement systems shall comply with the criteria of the North Carolina Division of Water Quality Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual and Current Edition. The two regulations, and Cameron can speak to it, he's got the BMP manual in front of him, but the two regulations that went in front of the planning board came directly out of that manual. So what we already have written into our ordinance in every zone is redundancy to what the planning board reviewed. It's already there. It, it's just a question of we were going to require the additional inspection report be sent to the town instead of if it's not functioning that we go out there and, and let them know that they are not meeting the best management practices manual and they need to fix their pervious system. The additional reporting and the, and the certified person is a option in the manual, it's not a requirement and that's what we took forward to the planning board. But them having to maintain and the system having to be functioning properly is written into our ordinance and it would be done either by our visual review of a system or complaint-driven. And that's how it's been done thus far. I'll also tell you for the large impervious, where you would think the, the huge sites, they have state stormwater permits and their requirements are written into their state stormwater permits and they have a whole host of requirements that they have to submit to the state that we are not involved in and that we don't have to monitor. So we're looking at the smaller driveway and parking area pervious pavement systems, not the big lows or any of those large 10,000 square foot systems. So I, I don't know if that sort of answered your question about the complaint-driven, but it is in our ordinance that they have to be maintained.
What's, what's different than the, the language that was proposed on both occasions is it spells out what's, I mean, the, the ordinance currently states that they have to comply with the criteria, but the two proposals were, were variations of how you comply with that and spelling it out in detail of how you comply.
Options from the manual of how you can show compliance versus just visually making sure the systems are not sheet, sheet raining, I mean, she's, water's not sheeting off of them, things of that nature.
So really, I mean, at the end of the day, comes down to what level of inspection or maintenance do we want to have and do we want to just assume people are being compliant or do we want them to demonstrate compliance in exchange for using this?
If it was strictly complaint-driven, we wouldn't have to do any monitoring or any source, sort of, correct?
I think, that's what I understand. I like it, I prefer kind of a good faith model for people who take advantage of this opportunity. You know, we, it'll be a complaint-driven or a, a, a visual inspection model, similar to what we're already doing.
I recall when it was discussed before that it was, what, so homeless responsibility, so they would be made, made aware of the situation if their driveway, whatever their pavement is or their patio or whatever, and they would be responsible for keeping that. And the only time we would get involved is if a neighbor or somebody said there's water running into their yard off the guy's patio or something to that effect. I, I think that's maybe should be as far as we could go, we should go, I should say.
I like that.
I tend to agree with that as well.
We can, if that would occur, for instance, we can look, right?
Yeah, and, and that's for any stormwater control measure, whether it's a retention basin or pervious pavement. If we, we get a complaint that it's failing, we're going to go inspect it and see that, you know, if it's in compliance or not compliant. And as of right now, we've had no complaints with either pervious pavement or any basins this year that I know of. Meredith, can you take that any?
And, and the other thing is if we do get a complaint and we go out there and staff is unable to determine from their immense expertise for pervious pavement whether it is or is not functioning correctly, we do have the authority to get the report that this ordinance would be mandating. We can say you need to get a BMP inspector out here and show us that this is functioning properly.
That's a landowner's responsibility.
Yes, sir.
The current ordinance provides for that.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I mean, sorry.
So does that mean that this is unnecessary?
If that's the level that we want to have and operate within, yes. I think, I think we had shared that we wanted something more strict, which is why we put staff through this exercise at a previous meeting and I think part of it is because of what we were considering at the time was looking at the more widespread use of this.
Right, right, right.
So I think that raised some concerns of do we have enough fail safes in place if this is going to start being used more widely throughout the town that we're protected from this becoming an issue? So I think that's why this came back up and why we asked for this. But I think just as it, it sounds like the board's struggling with it, that's what happened at the planning board level, going, okay, be careful what you ask for because maybe you're asking for something that's going to be, at the end of the day, a lot more intensive work and staff time and.
Well, and that's why I ask you to go and move to that capital.
Yeah. I think that, you know, since the requirement is the same whether we specify this or not, at the end of the day, if there's an issue, the town is still protected. It may go to your judgment of are we being proactive or reactive? And, I mean, all of our other ordinances and violations are complaint-driven.
React.
Yeah, we are reactive, but we've been able to operate well that way. I think it's, the nice thing is the research was done, these drafts are there, so as more properties take advantage of this or use this, I mean, we know it's a benefit overall, so that's great. This, if we were finding that it was becoming an issue in the town, it could always, it could go a different direction.
Yeah, my main thought when we discussed it before and I, I stayed because I saw in the minutes it reminded me is, you know, we, we have some stormwater issues and they're not nearly as bad as Derek had described. If it had been anything to help reduce that runoff could benefit to us and if we can do this and do it the way we're saying, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. And aren't a lot of that process in the whole thing, so there's something.
Okay, so am I understanding there's consensus for the board to leave it as it is currently?
Yes, we have. Physical inspection, complaint-driven model. Comfortable for that.
We made a decision tonight. Congrats, board. Okay, good work. All right, with that, we will move on to committee reports. Anyone have any committee reports this evening?
Sue did a great job.
Sue did a great job during public comments, right?
And the only thing I would want to say, Colleen, do you want to say anything about our neighborhood watch?
Sure, I can.
Okay.
I'll wait for public comment.
Okay, that'll be fine.
That'll work?
That'll work, that'll work.
Okay, and we'll move, anything else, any report? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner, right?
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I have, I have a few things. I attended the fifth annual Outer Banks Halloween Parade of costumes that was talked about earlier and I tell you, that was a great event and it was well-organized, a lot of fascinating costumes. And one thing popped in my mind, you know, one of the future events we might have at that might be a county police contest, a costume contest. But anyway.
I won't just leave that charge.
The, the event demonstrated an excellent use of Frog Pond area in the town complex, for that matter, and I'm starting to like this town complex thing because, you know, it's, we've, we've got a lot of available parking that's readily available here that people can park at with the schools and, and so I was pretty excited about that. I want to thank Mary for, for, for her insight and research that she's provided on events of the past with the town, i.e. surface tent, and she's got a lot of things on the hook with that and I, I think it's, it's a good general promotion of event-friendly areas of the town, like I, like I mentioned earlier, that, that we can capitalize on this complex. Mayor Pro Tim's done a lot of work on that in the past and gotten information on that. So I, I think we've got some good things that can come out of that, future discussions on that. I would like to request that the town manager place on the agenda for December the 10th, a presentation and it is a appreciation plaque to the police department from the Air County Motorcycle Toy Run. We'd like to make a presentation through the police department for helping us again this year with that. And then I, y'all excuse me for a minute, I'm going to get up. I bought a couple of things tonight and I bought them for the police chief and the fire chief. They are doing the Toys for Tots and I'm going to block this, block myself here. They are doing Toys for Tots program and this year is a special time of need to many folks that were affected by recent hurricanes and, and everywhere in general. This is an opportunity for people to send help to these folks and south of us was hit pretty hard. It'll make the holidays a little bit brighter for, for some of these folks. Killover Hills Fire Department and Police Department have Toys for Tots boxes set up, so I wanted to make sure I brought my toy and I guess that the police chief's probably going to get the Hot Wheels and I guess, I guess the lion will go to the, to the fire chief. But there's, there's a couple of events that are coming up, November the 23rd, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Walmart, Toys for Tots is going to be doing a toy collection there. And then also December the 9th will be the day that the Toys for Tots departs to Sampson County with a trailer of toys for distribution. It's just a great opportunity for us to contribute a little bit and so guys don't leave without getting their toys, okay?
What time did you say, Terry?
Uh, for the event?
Uh, no, for where I'm going.
Sampson.
Sampson County, Sampson County on, on the 9th, they're going to be leaving Toys for Tots, going to leave with a travel pole, supplies, toys for the, for the people that need them down there. Try to get through this as quickly as you can.
You're done, right? No worries.
A study was initiated by the town of Naxhead for motion-activated LED lights for crosswalks and I'd like to ask the board if they have any desire to have the town manager with Naxhead and find out exactly what was involved in that and if there's a, a part of that study that we could do in Killover Hills for our crosswalks. I've had a couple of citizens come to me and ask me, why can't we do something, especially on the beach road and stuff? They said, no, it's really hard to see anybody that tries to cross. So I, I didn't know what the board's position was, if we want to do that or not, but I wanted to bring it up at least to see what you guys think.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Hogan looked into that a year before last and the police department did some work and some parsing. I, I'm not familiar with what Naxhead has done, so certainly be interested in.
I read that in the paper, yeah.
Yeah, Debbie can talk to Cliff and then compare that to what we did.
We had talked at that time about doing something here and then the idea, which is logical, is to see what Naxhead wanted to do and see what Kitty Hawk wants to do and then keep it uniform.
Sure, definitely.
We don't do one thing, they do one thing.
Well, that's, that's why I was thinking, be good to see what Naxhead.
They're doing something now and I think about it and Southern Shores has been very aggressive with their crosswalk there.
Yes, yes.
So it's ducked, all the way up in Corolla too also. It's always been one of my, one of the things that I advocated was to try and make it a little safer across there and any way we can do that, I'd all for it.
It's good timing for the town manager to have the discussions because obviously if we're able to do something, it's going to have a budget impact, so to get this information. now so we can use that during our budget workshop.
Exactly. Just a couple more problems. There was a press release from the fire department about some kayakers that were pulled from Kitty Hawk Bay on November the 4th, at approximately 4:40 p.m. Killable Hills Fire Department, the Ocean Rescue Division were dispatched to a water rescue in Kitty Hawk Bay. And it was a successful event, and these guys, you know, they, they just do this day in and day out. I mean, congratulations, great job. I mean, makes it easy for us to sit up here. And then the last item that I have is I had sent an email to the town manager and to the mayor, and after review of DOT's survey of Lake Drive, not, not too long after that, we had a pretty major accident there. And my understanding was the car that flipped over on bypass was trying to avoid possibly another car coming out, or was either trying to turn out and another car hit it, or something to that effect, but it was another incident right there at, at Lake Drive. What I'd like to do is this, I'd like to readdress this, and instead of asking DOT to do anything, I, I'd like to have a letter on, to be sent to Alan Moran, who is the DOT representative, as far as we're concerned on the Board of Transportation, and get him to investigate. There's one, and I'm speculating here, there's, there's one item in all this study of the traffic accidents that DOT used and said there were a lot of rear end collisions. And they seemed to think that a traffic light wouldn't affect that, it wouldn't control that. But my question is, were the rear end collisions in avoidance of an accident of hitting somebody coming out of that road? I, you know, I don't know. But I think maybe if we send a letter to Alan and ask him to check into this and investigate and see what he can do, we might, we might find an answer or a way to, to do that. But I, I'm of the firm opinion that there's a light needed for the reasons I stated before.
We'll certainly happy to put a letter together to Alan. The last letter was to, was it to, I think Alan was copied.
Sure, he copied them. I'm thinking that it was probably to Jerry Jennings.
That's what I was thinking, Jennings.
I think it did too.
Yeah, and just Alan copied, but sure, without a.
What we can do is reference, we can reference the letter that we got in response to your request.
And the accident that happened right after.
And then some of the concerns that Commissioner Gray pointed out.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was a pretty, that was a pretty major accident. And it wound up with Harvey and flipped over on his side. I, I don't know the results of whether people were hurt or not, or whatever, but it was, it looked pretty, pretty bad. And with that, I'm done.
We will do that. We'll proceed with the letter to, to Alan.
Okay.
So, thank you. Certainly. Commissioner Whibley?
Kind of want to echo a lot of the comments made earlier just in today's meeting about thanking town staff for the response to tropical storm Hurricane Michael, what we received here. Mayor Davies, I'd really like to commend you for your use of social media, when events were happening and letting people know what was going on. That's how I kept up what was happening, and I sincerely appreciate that. I was very impressed with that level of executive leadership and kicking word out. And I'd really like to also thank our first responders kind of being on guard, securing Bay Drive during the cleanup effort, kind of making sure people, I used to live on Bay Drive, I lived there seven years ago for Irene, and there was a little mischief going on seven years ago that I don't think happened this time. So, it wasn't me. And so it, it was nice to see that things run so smoothly. Thank you, Debbie and Sean, for coordinating cleanup efforts, leadership, it was really appreciated, we, we heard it tonight. I've had people come in, like work, and several people just expressed sincere gratitude. Not one negative comment, everyone was impressed and thankful. And Sean and Derek, thank you guys in public works for being still on the ground, getting it done. Our, our town really should shine throughout this event. Sad event, it's terrible what happened, but we showed what our town's all about with how we responded to it. I'd like to thank the Board of Election Staff for their hard work during early voting and Election Day. I mean, it was seven to seven, 12-hour days, I've had some experience of what it's like to sit in front of a pool during early voting and on Election Day, it's tough. And to run this station and make sure everybody plays by the rules is hard work, and they did a great job. You think about how big the increase in turnout from the previous midterm election, they had their hands full, and I've popped by a couple times and kind of could see how busy, even early voting and Election Day, how it was here. So they, they deserve a, a lot of recognition, they did a great job. Last thing I'd like to do is congratulate the first flight and soccer team on a great season. I got the fortune of catching the second half of the game last night, coming up, making it semifinals for state championships, a big deal. They played great. It was a very, I mean, I could tell you that, that beating the crowd for those parents, it was a high-energy tense environment, it was a really good game, and really proud of our soccer team, our girls team too. We've, we've established a legacy here of excellence in soccer, and it's a lot of fun to be able to enjoy that in our community. So, great job, boys and girls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Yeah, I'd like to, I have a report from our last Tourism Board meeting, video, it's not very long, bear with me if you'd like to put it out there. Michael.
Hi, everybody, Lee Nettles here with your Dare County Tourism Board meeting recap from the October 18, 2018 meeting. We had a really cool agenda in October, let's jump right into it. First up, we heard from the Steering Committee. Every year, the Steering Committee reviews short-term restricted fund grant applications. We receive those annually. This year, we had three different applications, one from the town of Duck for the third phase of its pedestrian improvement project, we had Phase One from the town of Kitty Hawk with a trail connector program in Kitty Hawk Woods, and then Naxhead was once again working on the West Side Multi-Use Path Project, now approaching its eighth phase. Grant awards were made to all three applicants, and collectively, the awards were $843,000. Next, the Steering Committee reported on an item that came before a little while ago, the town of Naxhead had made a request that the Tourism Board consider purchasing its interest in Soundside Event Site. Back in 2007 and 2008, when the property was purchased, the town contributed cash towards that purchase. Its priorities have changed in the meantime, and it's asked that the Tourism Board and the Steering Committee give consideration towards purchasing its interest in the site. The Board gave it careful consideration and will forward a proposal back to the town shortly, which involves a lump sum payment upfront and then options to purchase the remaining ownership interest over a period of 20 years. The final item that the Steering Committee brought before the full board was its recommendation to try and purchase property immediately north of the Soundside Event Site at 6714 South Cootin Highway. The Board went into closed session to provide instruction for its negotiating agents and trying to formulate an offer to purchase that property. Obviously, we'll have much more to report on this in the near future, so look forward to sharing that with you at a later date. Next, we heard from the Budget and Finance Committee with the August collection figures for both occupancy and meals tax collections. August was a good month, however, we, you'll recall, we were working off the bad numbers for August of last year when we experienced the power outage for Hatteras Island with that first week of August. Nonetheless, we posted positive numbers, occupancy tax collections for the month of August were up 6%. The year-to-date on occupancy, January through August is up 4%. On the meal side, we also saw growth for the month of August, up 5%, year-to-date, up 2%. Next, we heard from the Grants Committee. The Grants Committee is one of five standing committees for the Tourism Board. They're specifically charged with reviewing the event grant applications. We have two windows annually for receiving event grants. This time around, this was the first window of two within the fiscal year, we received 14 different applications. It's a mix of both old and new events. One of the new ones is the Hatteras Waterfowl Festival, looking forward to that. We've also got something coming up from the Chamber of Commerce, the OBX Tiny Home and Lifestyle Festival, can't wait for that one. We also have some old favorites like the Flying Pirate and Storm the Beach coming to us from the Outer Banks Sporting Events. So, a mix of great events. The Committee shared its recommendation to the full board, and after discussion, awards were made to each of those 14 applicants, so all of them received some amount of funding. Collectively, the 14 grants together totaled almost $175,000. So, between the event grants and the short-term restricted fund grants that I reported on earlier, almost a half a million dollars going back into the community by way of the tourism industry and the tourism business that we have here in Dare County. For a full list of the event grants awarded, go to outerbanks.org/grants. Also, it's event season's still out there, so make sure you're paying attention to the things that are coming up in your area, make sure to get out there and have some fun, hopefully we'll see you around town. As always, I'd like to invite you to the upcoming Dare County Tourism Board meeting, which will happen on November the 15th, that's the third Thursday of the month. It'll be at 9 o'clock at the Rowan O'Callaghan Welcome Center. Hope to see you there. Take care.
The, every member of the Tourism Board has to serve on these two committees, and I'm on the Steering Committee and the Grants Committee, so I was highlighted here tonight. The, the property that in question is the, where the Dairy Queen and Ropes Course and the mini golf course are, it's just to the north of the event site. And tomorrow's meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, and there's a, part of the agenda is to go into a closed session to discuss the status of negotiations on purchasing that property. I don't, I don't know what it is, I couldn't tell you anyway, because it's a closed session. But as soon as that deal is completed or is not completed, it'll be made public. I think the numbers are pretty good, considering some of the stuff we've had going on this summer, but I just want to say how much I enjoy serving on that committee. It takes, it takes up a good bit of time, I have at least three meetings a month with them, sometimes four. And it's a little bit more work than this committee, actually. This one, we do a lot more work behind the scenes, so, but I enjoy doing it, and I, I hope you guys don't mind me bringing these videos forward.
No, they're really good.
Not at all, they've been great.
We had one, I think it was last month or the month before, it was like 12 minutes long, so I decided not to do that one. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I was going to mention the soccer, if you didn't, so, appreciate that very much.
It was a good game. I didn't like it. It was tough, but it was very good.
I was getting, I was in a DHHS board meeting last night, and I was getting texts during the meeting about, you know, the score, but Darren and the boys were there, it sounded amazing.
It was amazing.
And then heartbreaking at the end to lose in penalty kicks.
Double penalty kicks.
Right. It's amazing. Yes. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's agenda, couple items in your packet, and then just a couple, a couple of other items. The first is requesting support from the Board to send a letter, this is similar to the letter that Dare County's sending, to the North Carolina Flood Plane Mapping Division, requesting assistance and having FEMA finalize the issuance date for the flood insurance rate maps for residents and property owners. This process is really dragging on way too long. The, back in June of 2016 is when the release of the preliminary flood insurance rate maps or FERMs started, and then the appeal process deadline was back in November of 2017. Back on June, or back on September of, September 28th, a letter was sent requesting FEMA to move forward and provide, and provide, and release these, and we still don't have that information. So basically, this letter is to say, hey, we're still waiting, this has taken an awfully long time, can you please release the FIRM, so. Final issuance of that. In support of us submitting a letter.
Yes, absolutely. I support it. Thanks for our work. Doing it as well.
Okay, we will proceed. It's been way too long, so we'll proceed with getting that letter out this week. And then next is a proclamation designating November 2018 as Alzheimer's Disease Month in Killable Hills. You may have seen the Alzheimer's ribbon at Aviation Park, if you haven't, when you go out this evening, it'll be lit up and beautiful, but, you know, Alzheimer's is, is, continues to grow in numbers as far as the, the individuals impacted. An estimated 5.7 million Americans of all ages have Alzheimer's disease, and it affects 1 in 10 people age 65 and over. And as our population continues to grow and age, this is just continuing to be just a growing issue and concern, not only for the individuals suffering with Alzheimer's, but for their families and caregivers, it really takes a toll on the entire family unit. So with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation declaring November 2018 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in Killable Hills.
Sure.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please stick on saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Couple other things, I know, thank you Commissioner Gray for mentioning the toy drive that's happening. In addition to that, the town is also hosting two holiday drives. One is for food items, the other is for shelter pet needs. Both of those items are items related to any of those, so whether it's non-perishable foods or items for pets, that could be cat litter, it could be food, towels, blankets, cages, shampoo, cleaning supplies, any of those things could be dropped off. We'll have collection boxes at the recycle center, the fire department and the police department lobby. So, the collection date started today and will run through December 19th for those items. We, it's kind of a bittersweet, almost even announced this, that Santa's coming to town. Santa is coming to town, but my last picture with Santa last year at town was Fred. But anyway, Santa will be visiting Killable Hills December 8th, the event is from 4 to 6 p.m. Our staff do an amazing job turning this room into a winter wonderland. It's really incredibly impressive, and if the weather holds out, they'll be doing sleigh rides around Aviation Park. So, for young and old, please come and enjoy this, this afternoon, again, December 8th from 4 to 6 p.m. It's really, really a great event.
Prayers, no, right?
Prayers, I don't know, but we'll do a sleigh ride even if we don't have snow, so. And that is all I have this evening. So with that, the town manager's agenda.
Thank you.
Town attorney's agenda?
Drives me crazy when I cannot remember rules, even though there's more than I'd like to imagine in open meeting laws. Went to the phone, looked up suggested rules of our procedure, wanted to go back to tabling or deferring motions, so just for in general, there are two ways you can do it, non-specified or specified time. We really fall into the non-specified, we didn't give a certain date and time because we don't know when the new board will be filled. And the, I guess you could say consideration or the suggestion is 100 days. I knew there was, there was a limit on it, but it should be revised within 100 days from deferral, so.
And the most should be within the 100.
Exactly, exactly. So everything's fine there on the, I just wanted, just for all of our purposes, it drives me crazy.
The attorney and you wanted the specifics, that's right.
I couldn't help it, man.
We appreciate that.
Thanks for checking that out.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. You have five items tonight, you only have four in your packet. The first one is the minutes from the October 8th, 2018 meeting. Second's the September 2018 monthly reports. The third is to record the consensus that we received from the Board to waive building permit fees related to damages caused by tropical storm Michael through December 31st of 2018. Number four is two budget amendments. The first is to record the Government Education Access Channel Committee. The first is to record the Government Education Access Channel Committee LPDI grant. Number two is for replacement of the Fire Department Emergency Generator, it was determined that repairs are not viable due to the age of the piece of equipment. And number five, it's back in November 14th, 2016, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution designating Meredith Guns and Ron Farley as, to execute and file applications for federal and/or state assistance on behalf of the town when needed. I would just, I just wanted to have that reaffirmed by this Board because those actions are being taken both with Hurricane Florence for issues that we had on our oceanfront and Tropical Storm Michael for the situation on the Soundside. So, with approval of the consent agenda, simply reaffirming that resolution that was adopted in 2016 to continue with Meredith and Ron. Thank you. And I motion to approve the consent agenda as recommended.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you. And just on another note with that, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for being willing to work with us so quickly as all of that started coming in together when we were able to lock in getting those, the equipment and getting that contract signed, your willingness to do that by consensus and your willingness to do that knowing there was a possibility that it was going to be fund balance. And I think you have obviously seen how much your citizens appreciated it, so thank you.
It was really great work all the way around between, I mean, just amazing work with the staff and the Board working together, so, yep.
And we're very fortunate that you have your staff do that, just like with this generator. I mean, we sit here all the time and we talk about what a great job the Fire Department does for us and for the citizens, and then you have something like this that we need to get behind 100% and make sure that they're able to do that job and it's just a good team effort.
Absolutely. Well, and the staff, the staff on that, they had, of course, you've got something like this with the generator, you're thinking, oh, well, it's okay, we're not going to need it. Then you have hurricane and then Tropical Storm and, but they had made arrangements to lease a generator if needed. And I can't remember, Chief, did we actually have it here or?
Yes, ma'am.
It was here, that's what I thought, that's right. It was here for the backup plan if needed. And I don't know if you had to use it or not.
The user.
Okay. So, but you can't, you know, you can't keep doing that, you gotta, you gotta have something permanent, so, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, good job.
One quick question, what was the age of the generator being replaced?
Probably older than usual. Gosh, I mean, I
I was curious what the lifespan on one is.
You have to look into that, Commissioner.
Well, I mean, this one, the one here, the one here's been here since 1988, since we moved in, and the one there was there when I started working here, which was in 1984.
1904?
1904. Remember, you're always a year older.
Maybe that is when I was born, so 84 was legitimately when I was born.
Oh, my, don't do that.
Yeah, wow, okay, well, let's move on then, second time set aside this evening for public comment, if anyone else wants to disclose age or whatnot. Off on the floor, welcome, Colleen.
I do not want to disclose age, but thank you for the opportunity. Let's see, our next Neighborhood Watch meeting for KDH is scheduled for November the 28th, it's going to be here in Town Hall, starting at 6:30. Officer Gilreath has been an amazing resource for us, she is currently looking at data to map our town to find out where our highest areas of crime are located. We're going to start with vehicle and home breaking and entering, B and Es, if you want to be on the inside track there. And we're going to take the highest hit area, we're going to get together as a group, we are going to canvas and knock on doors and introduce ourselves to people and let them know that the town is looking out for them and here are some options that they have. And then, once we've completed that canvassing activity, we're going to have a great old cookout hosted by Commissioners Gray and Commissioners Winley. One's providing the food, one's going to flip burgers, and we're going to, we're really going to try to turn it into an event that is going to be fun and family-friendly and really give us an opportunity to kind of go out and reach people in a way that we haven't done in a really long time. I have learned a lot about the National Community Watch program with, thanks to Debbie and Mary, who were like, hey, slow your roll on the logo. So, we're working on pulling all that together, but I did go in to the national database, I registered our town as having an official Community Watch now, so I feel very important. Our Facebook page has over 100 Kill Double Hills permanent residents in it, it's well over 100, there are lots of people just keeping an eye on things, out-of-state homeowners and things like that. I'm trying to make sure that we're cross-referencing everybody and pushing everybody back to the police page, the fire department page, the town page, so that we have a good blanket of information going out, but we have over 100 residents on our Facebook page and with just three public events and a booth, we've signed up 60 people, which is phenomenal. And when they had the Halloween parade, I wasn't able to make it and asked for volunteers and was inundated by people saying, we'll be happy to represent, which is something that we don't really get a lot of. So, you know, in the beginning, going back to seven years ago, where it was like, Colleen, you're like, what do you think needs to happen in the town? We need community involvement, we need people to care and we need people to be able to, you know, want to join in, and we're really seeing that happen with this program, so I'm super excited to be a part of it, so thank you all.
Thank you.
She has evolved the calling, she's doing an amazing job with that, so every time I look, there's always a new vote, and thank you for that calling.
That's great. And thank you guys for hosting the cookout, it's wonderful.
We're going, we're going. Bring your acting.
That's great, that's great. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yeah, I'm welcome.
From all the way on the other side of the room. My name is Brean Bailey, I'm actually a resident outside of Vannium, but in observation of the gridlock that the Board experienced this evening with the open seat, I'm wondering if you would consider polling online possibly, the residents of Kill Double Hills and maybe presenting the two candidates, because it seems like the Board is very split on those two, and that might be an option to prevent maybe this happening again, you know, next month and then not being pushed into something that you're not comfortable with, like a coin toss or drawing of a name or, you know, something along those lines, but the, if I understand correctly, the Board's positions are elected and maybe possibly, the newspaper does a pretty good job of, you know, writing things up on candidates and stuff, so maybe you can present something to the public and just poll them for their opinion. That way, maybe if you got a lot of people that was interested in one candidate, that maybe some of you would be willing to change your vote. But that was my thought process and observation, but I continue to be impressed constantly with Kill Double Hills and the things that I see go on here, and I think a lot of the towns can learn a lot from the things that go on here.
I think very much.
Thanks for coming on, also, not just on the other side of the room, but the other side of the bridges too.
Yeah.
I learn so much constantly in every meeting that I sit in, like the Tourism video, so I think I learn, or I know so much about the county, but there's always something else, so, but I do, you guys are wonderful leaders, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, yes. Okay. Yes.
No.
Oh, I thought you were going to
No, ma'am.
So, touching quickly, response to that, great work with the Neighborhood Watch, thank you, Colleen, for your work with that, and Commissioners, thank you for your work with that, and the citizens for engaging, so. And Grant, appreciate your suggestion, I think I have to look in outside of this meeting just the legalities and what we can do, but certainly love for people to bring ideas forward, so. And with that, thank you all for hanging in to what's a little bit longer than normal for a KDH meeting, but we had a lot to cover tonight. And again, for those that are still in the room that had put their applications in, I know some have already left, but again, thank you all so very much, we really appreciate how much you care for the town and appreciate everyone's interest. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
For a second?
Right.
All right, any other discussion?
Too much fun.
Yeah, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone not want to complete? Good night. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.